Previously served with the Durham Police Department for sixteen years. And prior to that, he served with Prince William County, Virginia, P M for four years. To be eligible for these promotions, these officers participated in an hours-long evaluation consisting of managerial exercises, paneling reviews, and presentations. They not only excel in each of those categories, but they also exemplify the agency's mission and our agency's core values. I can tell you from my own part, before these officers were formally promoted, both of them served in an important leadership roles for our agency. Did tremendous jobs developing our young personnel. Cannot thank them enough and I should give them a very gratitude for their efforts. So I understand as well that we've got a couple of special members of the audience that would like to step up or participating badge candidates. Any on the panel? Then we got one more thing going. We did, I've got one more statement, uh, which is where I'd like to make. I'd like to revisit really quickly our LEAP's recognition. Uh, this was truly a team effort on every part and every member of the police department. But as with many teams, there's often times to stand out, in the least, if you will. I can tell you there's not a person, not a single person with the agency that wanted to be able to say this one thing more than one particular person. And that is to be able to say that the Yonkers Police Department is the first agency in Franklin County to receive the, uh, the LEAP's award. And please join me in a round of applause for our administrative specialist, Ms. Taneet Beck. And we do have one final presentation tonight. Finally tonight, I'd like to recognize Captain Jahan Zeb Boggsy for excellence in service and awarded the North Carolina Justice Academy's Leadership Certificate. Captain Nichols, step up please. Of important note, there are just fifty law enforcement officers selected each year statewide for this certification. Captain Boggsy committed not only his time while ensuring that continued operations patrol responsibilities, but sacrificed his own personal time in pursuit of this goal. This recognition required four hundred hours of leadership training in the areas of development for law enforcement managers, police budgeting, community policing, first-line supervision, tactical leadership, and FBI leader's leadership training program.
Do you think that Joe Jones doing this online? So we do think that Joe Jones doing this online during the.
Joe, are you on with us? I am. Okay, perfect. Thanks, sir. Give us a quick moment, so. Now the fun's gone.
Yeah.
Oh, really? We don't only, we don't only have packed rooms like this, now everybody's leaving.
We should just keep rolling.
No, you.
Should just kept rolling, not giving them a chance to leave.
Not giving a chance. Thanks, guys.
You're gonna just be set up there.
Yeah, you got a hot foot.
All right, good deal. Um, we do not have any public hearings, uh, for tonight, so I'll move along into item eight, citizens' comments. Um, we did have one that signed up online and registered, and I think we've got a couple, uh, that also signed up to speak to item nine P, which then moved down the list into new business. Um, but I will open the floor up to your citizens' comments. Um.
Yes, yes, sir. I'm Zigar. It's here. It's here in twenty twenty-two. Scientist's grant traded, uh, within Nevada and around. Not a Walter White candidate, actually. One, a couple of shout-outs. Really, I just wanted to say, um, you know, congratulations again to our law enforcement. It sort of, it, uh, it's always been seen, get recognized. They have dangerous job and people say, so. Congratulations to them. And then, uh, also, I, you know, my, me and my children were sort of addicted to scoops on name. So, you know, shout-out to them, and they're some of the best ice cream we've had, um, in the entire brilliant state. Um, and that house coffee is really, really, it's a little hesitant to go at first, it's, you know, size of a posse, but it's, uh, it's really, it's really stuff. So those are some hidden gems in Youngsville. Um, really just to transition to the main, uh, purpose of my, my being there is really not, not too hard on the amount of work, what's still happening, I mean, basically, guys, like, um, more so to just sort of engage. You know, I, I think there would be dive into the show, say, it's on sort of a forum or maybe a platform where, you know, people like myself and Kelsey, in a sense, could engage with, you know, board members or the community at large. And I think if we, you know, if we had some, maybe like inner faith dialogues and, you know, things, you know, through churches or synagogues or mosques or, you know, anything that could open dialogues, I mean, so we could all get to know each other a little bit better as a community, know our backgrounds, who we come from. Um, it's, it's not intended to be, you know, this adversarial debate style thing more, you know, I come from Chicago where, you know, really large communities there in the suburbs of, I mean, Christian population, Muslim, Jewish populations. We would frequently take turns gathering at different institutions, whether it's a church, mosque, or synagogue. And, uh, you know, we come together and break bread and, you know, we'd all just kind of sit and sometimes talk about our differences, sometimes talk about mostly probably our similarities, realize, you know, we're all just one human race and we all want to just, we have the same aspirations and same goals in life largely. So, um, you know, I know that's just my only, my only sort of recommendation, just sort of, um, you know, Youngsville's growing. There's a lot of, you know, people such as myself with different backgrounds and ethnicities. Uh, it would be good if we sort of welcomed and engaged each other, uh, rather than, you know, Mr. Man, I was recently, I will be, rather than just be silent and, and each community kind of just doing the whole thing, stuff that we, you know, just more of a community. That would be great. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
I tell you what we'll do, and I appreciate it, because we were at time anyway. Um, I don't think it's a bad idea. I think a lot of times if we can speak openly and freely and find some commonality, you know, we can all get along a lot better. So what I can do is maybe have a conversation with this gentleman in the back after the meeting or at some point soon. And I think it's a good idea to, to do that. So.
Sure.
Thank you for your time.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, I'm gonna butcher this name, uh, David Duncan. Okay, perfect. I. I'm not. I've got, I've got a rough handwriting, and I'm not, I'm not casting this first.
The pen gave out on him. I could see, he like scribbled like the first two letters.
Don't wanna say what I was reading on here, so, uh, Mr. Duncan, floor is yours, sir.
This is Duncan. I apologize. Will you step up in the podium and state your name?
Did you? This interview generally doesn't have.
Yeah, I mean, if. Is that one, that's one of the ones you guys pulled out, right?
It's nine.
We haven't pulled it yet.
Just one of the one.
To keep the flow, I'd rather than speak during citizens' comments, and when y'all.
We can ask questions.
You can ask questions.
Yeah, I think that's fair. If, if, or if you just wanted to chill out right now and then wait for, if there's any questions from the commissioners, we can call on you then. Is that good?
Okay.
All right. Sounds good. All right. Uh, any other citizens in attendance that would like to make a citizen's? All right, hearing none, we'll move along into the consent agenda. And we've got items A through Q, which is a lot. Um, I think I've heard some grumblings about, uh, amending the consent agenda, so, um, Commissioner Percy, I think you had some commentary, and Commissioner Brain, I think you also had some commentary.
I'd like to pull, uh, item P.
Okay.
And I'd like to pull O, and I, I can make a motion to approve the consent agenda amended to exclude items O and P.
Okay. All right, I hear a motion. Do I hear a second? All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? That is unanimous. We'll move along into, all right, I need to put this down in the back. Emily, keep me honest over there, please. So that'll be new business. Well, okay, um, sometimes you get into these chambers and it's some moving parts, and, uh, you just have to be able to, to rock and roll, move with it, so. Um, next up is old business. There's no old business to discuss, so we'll move into new business. We've already had the risk review presentation, uh, so we'll move along into item B, uh, the Franklin County, Franklinton, and Youngsville in a local. Um, the action requested here is gonna be to, um, continue this to the next meeting. Um, I think there's a few things that we're waiting on from, uh, the county level and maybe even the state level. Um, so I'll entertain a motion or just, do you want it in a motion form or?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table this until the next meeting.
Thank you. Okay, we got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Continue. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Uh, continue to the next meeting. And then we'll move along into item C, which was P from the consent agenda. Uh, approved temporary construction easement for Holden Village. So, um, for this one, this is the temporary construction easement across from, well, down on Holden. Now here, and part of it is, the part we're talking about is, is our property. And one of the things that we've been working for is to have sidewalks so that we can get the neighborhoods on that side downtown. And, and I believe that's gonna happen on, uh, your side of the development when you put it in. Uh, but I'd like to see where we're, we have that temporary easement, if it goes through, um, that when you finish to construct a sidewalk there, so that would help us. But, sorry, not construct the sidewalk, but do the grading for the sidewalk to be completed later. Um, so I would like to, uh, a move that we authorize the town manager and town attorney to enter into a contract approving the temporary construction easement if the developer will grade the widening to permit a sidewalk of not less than six feet in width to be installed. Okay, um, I think this is the one that you guys had, uh, so any questions, comments, concerns from the commissioners? Uh, do you guys have any feedback for us, uh, as we move forward, or does that sound amenable or?
It's not.
Yes. Well, okay, I was, I was gonna give them, okay. So if we got a motion.
Give me a second before we start.
Yeah, I'll go ahead, I'll go ahead and entertain a second, and then we'll go into discussion, and we can speak to these gentlemen. So do I hear a motion on the, I mean, do I hear a second on the motion, uh, from Commissioner Brain?
I'll cycle it.
Okay, we got a first and a second now, and now we're in discussion, so. You, are we good?
We're good.
Okay, but listen, it's, it's not a terrible thing to keep us honest up here, so, um, you're the, you're the notes creator, so if it's not how you want it, we need to know. So I will open that up for any questions, comments, concerns from, from each of.
David Duncan from. As an engineer, civil engineer license in a couple of states, and focused primarily on stormwater road control, science design, and. I've been involved with the Holden Village project primarily related to B flood setting of the propping of the creep through there. And that has a pretty big impact with a widening of the road. From my understanding of the project history, there has been a lot of conversation approval for wetland impacts, or the stream impacts, or the, uh, roadways, or the guardrails, or the entire development. It's not through a couple of different phases and approvals, due to just by different entities. And especially on the north side of the road, the sidewalk or the, the grading from there is about as deep as D U T will allow within the right of way. And the guardrail locations as required from, from D U T's side is pretty tight and strict from there. Without doing some things that the D U T wouldn't allow, there isn't a lot of space on that side without widening, uh, beyond the culverts and the other locations, other items in that area, which will impact the stormwater, which will impact the wetlands, and impact a bunch of other items. There are currently some homes just on the north side of the road that are within the hundred-year floodplain. And widening that culvert extending it to putting some extra build on that area to put a sidewalk in would likely impact those houses a little further and then environment where you, uh, all the processes that have been, been approved so far. So this environmental scientist, you know, on permitting side, and the, they recommended that the Corps, uh, who approved the plans as it is, may have some concerns with putting a sidewalk through there, but only because of a minimization of. That they don't want to have, you have to have a really good evidence of why you would add additional bill or additional work in that area, and they recommended that the Corps likely would not want to have the, uh, additional bill in that space. There are plenty of ways to make access work. I am pro-access, and I want to have that idea of, of interconnectivity. Yeah, but in particular, it seems like very difficult to do. Right here, the, the development side, I think, and I can definitely speak to some of the owner's side. I'm sure you'll hear, you'll hear any questions about the feasibility or the impacts of what may happen just from the engineering side.
Um, and again, yes, I'm breaking into the Eastwood Homes, uh, we are going to build a project. Um, the, uh, Commissioner Brain, what you suggested about the grading, have we? Have we, that's honestly the first I've heard of that, so I certainly think it's something we're willing to consider on the south side, on the town's property. I don't know if we've done any kind of engineering to know, I think we were thinking construct the sidewalk. Um, did you look at potentially even grading it?
Yes.
Okay, so.
What you're saying on the south side?
He is, yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm talking about the towns, the town side. So what, if I understand.
It's outside of this.
Well, the, the south side of the town's property is where you guys would like the sidewalk to function.
Right.
Right, and, um, so like I said, I, I wasn't, we were thinking that you guys actually wanted the sidewalk constructed, so.
May have missed, but yeah.
Well, I don't know.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so do you want it constructed or do you just want it graded for future construction?
We want it constructed.
Okay.
I, I think that the, what the town wants is that the sidewalk be constructed. What we're willing to accept, given the constraints that are on this site, and that your stormwater stuff has already mostly been approved, is to say, if you grade it such that the town can subsequently install it later, as we own the property, there's no additional approvals that would be required, and we could then install the sidewalk at cost of concrete rather than having to do all the grading work. To mobilize the earthquake equipment out there that you're gonna have out there anyway, has a great expense for the town, but you're gonna have it out there anyway. So the, the incremental increase expense to you guys will allow us to have a sidewalk network that connects through an area that your engineer has already told us, we're not gonna get any other way, period, full stop.
So. I, we're absolutely willing to put that, that's an easy answer. What I don't know, I just can't speak to what that would entail. Uh, you know, I don't know. This, my understanding of the slope on that side of the road is that it's, you know, uh, David, you might be able to speak to it better, but it's, it's would be elevated to a point that I don't know that it's really, David, you mentioned something earlier, like, uh, it would almost have to be elevated, is that correct? I'm sorry, I'm getting out of my, I'm getting out of my thing here.
Certainly, and, and I have a couple of exhibits that would help any youth ever afford one to get to see that, but.
Imagine a flash drive, people pull up a screen, I don't know if that would be helpful.
Yeah, I think.
That's what's in the agenda packet, I believe.
I was just born. All right, because that's a little vertical.
Do you, would you have a, a preference or an idea about sidewalk, the top of the slope or the bottom of the slope? And next to the road, behind the guardrail, or at the bottom of the slope, all the way down?
So I believe the commissioner's motion was to allow the town attorney and the town manager to enter into a contract. We recognize that there's a number of constraints out there, and that it's gonna be a compromise for all parties involved. We're not interested in y'all building the Taj Mahal out there just to build the Taj Mahal. But if we don't get this network piece in, it, it's never gonna happen.
Never have, yeah.
Right. Right.
So I think that's kind of the motion at hand, right? Just to kind of reiterate what you're saying, it's just to have these guys, be able to have a conversation with you guys back and forth.
Absolutely, we're more, we're more than happy. I just, my only concern from Eastwood's perspective is, you know, if it turns into a million-dollar project, construct a sidewalk, I mean, that's, that's not feasible.
Sure.
You know, it's just so, and also, uh, is it physically possible where it's not a health and safety risk, basically? I mean, we know that's a, a busy road, and it's tight, it's tight along there, so, um, our real only concern is the, it, it's not, you know, it's not the cost, it's not the willingness to do it. It's, is it able to be done, really, and that's, you know, that word gets a little tricky. So, but if the motion is just to, I mean, you know, to enter into a contract to try to work this out, I think you'd be willing to do that. I just, I guess my only question would be, what if we're not able to come to a solution? What happens with that contract? Um, that's kind of, I know that's a loaded.
I mean, so we would discuss, uh, right now, we've been directed by the board, um, you know, you all would like a temporary construction easement for town on our property. Uh, we would like our, you know, the grading for the sidewalk. Uh, we'll negotiate what, you know, based on the information we receive from you all later about feasibility and cost. And, um, you know, if we need to bring an alternative solution to the board later because what they've requested is impossible, um, that's something that we can do later. We won't have it, we won't have a contract, um, until, you know, we reach a, a solution that everyone can.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, the other piece that is, is a part of this is that they also gave us greater flexibility than what you exhibited. So if you need five thousand square feet instead of five hundred, I don't remember if the numbers are correct, but that, that parcel is there, and we can use as much of that parcel to put this in as is necessary.
Well, then, yes, in that case, uh, you know, as long as, as long as we're not pinned in a corner that we can't get out of, if it's not possible, uh, yes, I would absolutely be willing to enter into that.
Okay. Good deal.
Yeah, we, 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 we're not, we're not trying to be difficult, it's just, this is a difficult sidewalk to construct.
Understood.
Yeah.
So you're not in the business of building overpasses or anything like that? Fair enough, fair enough. Well, guys, we appreciate the feedback. Thank you so much. All right, um, any additional questions, comments, or concerns while we're still in discussion? All right, so we got a first and a second, no more discussions, so I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, that is unanimous. Um, and why I didn't do O instead of in front of P, I have no idea. Again, lots of moving parts, so bear with me. Um, so item D, which is going to be O, um, adopt resolution in support of Summerfest, and Commissioner Percy, that's the one that you wanted to pull through the discuss.
Yeah, so, um, we can talk with staff, uh, there was a couple of things that they kind of hit last minute. Worrying about, uh, maybe it's like some signage and stuff.
Okay.
Um, I would go to our wonderful planning specialist if she could, uh, be more in depth with it, because I got information kind of from staff.
So, uh, this motion is about, uh, supporting Summerfest, a town-sponsored event. This is something that I've been in talks with business owners, um, they're kind of coming together collectively to play this event, and so we were getting all the moving pieces together, and something that one of the business owners suggested was putting banners up. Um, so I just added that to the staff report, and that's kind of, I'd say, pull that off the agenda, that just allow more people to know about Summerfest, and, um, it's gonna be a good one.
I do not.
It's also included that language in the event.
Okay. All right, any, uh, questions, comments, concerns from the commissioners? All right, well then I'll entertain a motion.
I'm moving to adopt the amended resolution in support of Summerfest to include banners.
So long, I thought second, you weren't even.
Commissioner Redd is super eager to. She ready for Summerfest. All right, so we got a first and an immediate second.
Sounds like a first and a half.
Is there any discussion before we move to vote?
I'm just looking forward to Summerfest, and I'm thankful that the businesses are coming together to do this. I'm excited about it.
It'll be a fun event. It'll be hot, but it'll be a fun event, so. Uh, any additional discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Uh, any opposed? Uh, that was for you. Okay, all right, that's unanimous. Just, just a slight delay. Um, reports and other business, I really don't have a lot. Um, I think the golf tournament that was put together, unfortunately, Lemon stepped out. I was actually gonna be very congratulatory towards him and say, man, great job, and now he's not even here to hear it, so, um, I think him and Alyssa did a tremendous job, uh, were getting that together. Uh, twenty-four teams was pretty amazing. I think everyone had a really good time out there. I got pranked with one of those exploding golf balls, uh, which scared the, um, scared the dickens out of me, let's just put it that way, but, um, no, all in all is great. Um, I love when the community comes together and we're talking about Summerfest, or we're talking about other things. I love the fact that Youngsville is still like hometown enough to where people will get out and they will support these types of things, so. That's, I think that's it. At least that's all I can remember. And I'm sure once we get online, someone's gonna jog my memory about something, but, uh, I'll turn things over to Commissioner Redd. And I'm sure once we get online, someone's gonna jog my memory about something, but, uh, I'll turn things over to Commissioner Redd.
Well, I will, along those lines, I am a member of Kiwanis, um, of Youngsville and they would be happy to help with the Kid Zone at Summerfest. I know that someone had talked about that, we did just have our meeting Tuesday evening and they confirmed that that is fantastic. So maybe at some point we can chat just to see what you need specifically, but we will have volunteers and all the things and the games and all the stuff that Kiwanis has. Um, and with that said, Kiwanis is putting on their fall festival, you know, you gotta have a festival every season. Um, that is Saturday, September twenty-eighth, and it is in conjunction with the church, which is fantastic, it's a great space. Um, they'll have the huge car show there and all that good stuff, so I'll talk more about that at the next meeting, but just wanted to get the twenty-eighth on your calendar of September. Um, and that's all that I have right now in my brain.
All right, Commissioner Percy?
I don't have a whole lot for us to do.
So is that, nothing, okay, all right. Um, thank you, sir, Commissioner Brain?
You forgot one thing, um, this, this Saturday.
Yes, I did. I personally didn't speak to that, oh, this is so scary.
So, um, the burnt barrel is hosting a dad bod car wash. And Commissioner Percy and myself are celebrative, uh, celebratory, celebrity dad bod car washers, so, um, please come out and.
The money.
Car wash and support, uh, Franklinton High School scholarship.
Yeah, it goes to their, uh, construction technologies and vocational classes for a scholarship.
So.
So I'm gonna be there.
So y'all can, y'all can thank your lucky stars, and I already have two, uh, graduation parties to go to, cause nobody wants to see any of this. But I appreciate you guys being willing to do that and raise money for a good cause, cause, um, I know anytime we're talking about like scholarship dollars, that's improving someone, like from a STEM perspective, uh, I think it's, it's pretty outstanding, so, yeah.
All right, um, so that's, uh, this Saturday, twelve to four.
They answered my calendar.
Sunscreen.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, June twenty-ninth, it's a Saturday, is the, our second annual block party, so this is celebrating the one year anniversary of, uh, uh, Home Slice opening up, uh, so it'll be loud music, vendors, food trucks, uh, everything set up in that block down there with, uh, Home Slice, Yacht Club, Sharon's Deli, and, uh, Victorian and Ice Cream, Scoot Don't Make. I don't forget that.
Literally.
Yeah, yes. Um, so be sure to check that out and then.
Truck you and piggyback on that, the Nail Cove, which is the new nail place in downtown, is actually having their grand opening that same day at three o'clock. So if anybody could do that while we're kind of in that area and just hang out, they are not members of the Franklin County Chamber, so there won't be like an official ribbon cutting, but they wanted to do their own ribbon, and I did say that I would, because they did it just such a lovely job. I said that, uh, we might all show up at seven, three o'clock.
June twenty-ninth.
Correct, that same day. Mm-hmm.
All right.
And I actually talked to Brian last night just to let him know, so that maybe we could all kind of, something together, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we, uh, we had a campa meeting yesterday, um, not gonna go real in depth there, but there was a good presentation provided about the SPOT seven, which is the state prioritization, uh, yeah, I don't know what the actual acronym means, but it's state prioritization for transportation projects. And he, uh, went through all of the funding, where it goes for statewide mobility, regional impact, and then division needs. And we did approve the, the target modal mixes for our scoring for that. Um, sixty-four percent, uh, was roadway, uh, twenty-four percent was rail and twelve percent was public transportation. So that was the, uh, recommended modal mix from staff and it was a, approved yesterday at the meeting. It gets a little convoluted with the regions and the divisions, we're in division five, which is grouped in with division six as region C. The good news is there is available funding for region C and that regial, regional, uh, competition stage there, that's the second stage, so. There's, uh, nine hundred and ninety-two million dollars of funding availability there, so, uh, hopefully that will get some projects in our region, even if it doesn't come directly to us. Hopefully we get some of those projects ahead of us, complete so that we can move up, so, uh, that's as far as I go into it, but, that's update from yesterday.
That was a good update. All right, um, again, Saturday, dad bod car wash, raise some money, yay. Um, and, uh, Commissioner Johnson, do you have anything, uh, that you needed to discuss or address?
No, sir, Mayor, I'm good, thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right, we'll turn things over to, uh, our esteemed town attorney, Katie Barbara Jones.
Well, it is my honor to keep serving as your town attorney, um, I don't have any public business to report, uh, the interlocal will be something that we discuss next month. But if you have any questions, uh, feel free to reach out to me about that and we've got some more stuff coming down the pipeline, so. Um, it's always exciting to have that background work come before you for review and, um, thank you very much.
Um, thank you, uh, and then we'll turn things over to staff, Mr. Page, if you wanna go first?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I had a couple of items, first to piggyback off of, uh, what Mayor Pro Tim Brain said, um, as you know, um, there was a group of Youngsville residents, uh, and board members that went to the Capitol and met with our legislatures. Um, there were a number of representatives and senators there, uh, and we went with the weight force chamber. And our number one ask was to begin doing something with US One in terms of making that, uh, transportation cord or better for everyone. Um, and I am delighted to hear that there are additional funds in the regional pot, because that is a, uh, project that will compete very highly at that regional level, so that's, that's very exciting. Um, the five points, as y'all are aware, the county signed the interlocal agreement and we anticipate construction starting any day now. I heard that, uh, eight-one-one was out there locating today, so we anticipate that happening very, very soon. It may be that that kicks off on Monday, um, some of it will be night work, they may occasionally close that intersection, I don't know what that's gonna look like. Um, as y'all know, when they closed the railroad crossing, um, it was a little chaotic, so we, we hope that these guys plan better than CSX did, but that remains to be seen. We evaluated what was a leak from one of the gutters at town hall and it was determined that the way the oak leaves are being dropped into the gutters and shading the, the building, that those trees are gonna need to be removed, that should happen sometime in the very near future. We'll place them back, we'll replace them with smaller trees, cause they're under some power lines, um, and they'll either be dogwoods or something that will bloom in the spring and have a little bit of color there, but they also won't grow up into the power lines the way these, uh, oak trees did previously. Captain Mugsy assisted with using his wholesale, um, dealer license to purchase a vehicle for the town. The lowest price that I could find it online was nineteen thousand five hundred dollars, um, however, he charged us a wholesale price plus a three hundred and ninety-nine dollar document fee. And we got a new bolt E, well, a used, a new to us.
New dump.
Uh, Bolt EUV for seventeen thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars, um, and that, the three hundred and ninety-nine dollars was what he charged for about four hours worth of paperwork with his dealer's license and everything, so, uh, it was, uh, gracious of him to have done that for us, although he does obviously work for the town, I was the one that authorized that project, uh, prod, purchase, not Captain Mugsy. Um, the new trash truck is supposed to be delivered in the next few weeks.
Did, did you want to talk about how much money he saved us by doing that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, he saved us about two thousand five hundred dollars by being willing to use his, uh, license to move in that direction.
That's a big deal.
Absolutely. The, uh, the new trash truck should be here sometime in the next two weeks. It, as y'all know, is about a half million dollars, um, we'll get it logoed up at some point in time, it won't be obviously delivered with logos, but, um, we'll get it on the road as soon as we can, because the crew is very much looking forward to it, I don't know if you're aware, but on recycling months, uh, recycling weeks right now, they run the whole route for the trash, take the trash to the dump, come back and then run the whole route again for recycling. And so there have been days where the public works guys have worked, uh, ten and a half hours straight to pick both back to back. And that's just a result of us only having one truck that is dependable at the moment. And then lastly, we received the final set of invoices and corrected numbers for the main street improvement project, the total out of pocket. But let me amend that, except for the final invoice from NCDOT for their time, which is approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. All of those invoices taken together will mean that the total main street improvement project cost the board about six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We'll have a final number for that with the fiscal year twenty-four audit and can finally close the book on the main street improvement project. Even here, one year after they finished working actually on the street, it's taken that long for the invoices. And Mr. Mayor, these are the only updates that I have.
Outstanding, thank you, sir. Um, any additional updates from staff?
Just a quick comment, the golf tournament, um, those numbers we looked at, minus expenses, they raised over thirteen thousand for the Sessos Centennial. So they did a really good job this year, it was one of the better years, I think it's the best. Everybody seemed to have a really good time, last minute, we had a lot of people just start signing up and said thirteen towards our fireworks next year, so I'm happy. And that's all I have.
All right, and then we've got our Sessos Centennial meeting tomorrow at ten, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Ten AM, mark. All right, um, any additional comments from staff? Nothing, okay, all right, uh, there's no need to go into closed session, so item fourteen is to adjourn, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. Got a first and a second, any discussion before we move to vote, here none, all in favor? All right, any opposed? All right, we are adjourned.